Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome members of council, staff, and members of the public to our September 23rd council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to call Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Hyatt.
Present.
Councillor O'Hara.
Present.
Councillor Patel.
Present.
Councillor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Luisey.
Present.
And we have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And at this time, I'd like to ask you to give us the land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral lands of the Chipewa, the Odawa, and the Poto Tommy peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Beg. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to ask council if there's anyone that would like to declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and prepare the necessary paperwork for the clerk.
And I do have one item, your worship, has been submitted by Deputy Mayor Field in relation to item 14, which is our Lampton sanitation payment of invoices.
Okay, thank you. So noted. That'll move us on to the adoption of the agenda. There's a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the agenda of the September 23rd, 2024 regular session of council.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That brings us to the adoption of the minutes of a regular meeting we had held on September the 9th, 2024. I'll ask for a move in a second to put the minutes, that motion, on the floor for discussion. Moved by Councillor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on September 9th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from council, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to number eight, which is a moment of reflection. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to the council row table announcements. And tonight, we start with Councillor Hyatt, please.
Uh, thank you. Just want to say thanks to the committee for the Terry Fox Run. They did a great job, great weather, lots of participants. I would say better turnout than last year and lots of funds raised for the event, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Councillor Hyatt. Councillor Patel.
Um, through you, just thanks to all the staff and volunteers that put on the Harvest Dinner. It was never disappoint. It was a great turnout and a great meal and a beautiful night. Entertainment was probably my favorite over all of the events, not necessarily of the evening, just to clarify, but no, it was well done and I'm so happy that I was able to attend.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Patel. Councillor O'Hara.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Welsh.
Um, Hillsdale Cemetery Tour was a huge success with probably about 200 attendees and still being talked about by people, so stay tuned for 2026.
It was a great day. Okay, we'll go to Deputy Mayor Field, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, through you. The Harvest Dinner was extraordinary and, you know, as Councillor Patel said, the volunteers and the staff have outdone themselves again. It's just such a great night. I attended the VPP and saw the extreme fiddler. The ultimate fiddler. Oh, my gosh. Like, it is amazing what we have here and I don't attend enough. I just, it just blew me away, so. So we did that. One thing I was gonna just do, a brief thing, it's not on there with our committees, but our Scotiabank Committee has met a couple times and we're gonna be bringing a proposal before council in the near future. We have another meeting coming up. We're doing some housekeeping items just to get the building to a point where we can bring it back before council for a decision, so that should be coming up soon, so.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. That's great. Councillor Clark.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, I have a few items and again, a few are some repetitions, but I will go through this. I attended the Cultural Services Division of Lampton County Show and Tell at the YMCA on Saturday, September 14th in celebration of their 175th anniversary. I spoke on the events that took place to bring Waterville TG to Petrolia and the gift that was presented to me on their official opening. Councillor Ross O'Hare was the mayor at that time. I attended the 2024 Farm Table Harvest Fest on Saturday, September 14th, as previously mentioned, was sold out, great time had by all. Congratulations to all the sponsors, Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth and all her staff, volunteers, culinary carrying for a fantastic meal and the weather turned out to be great. I attended the Committee of County Council on Wednesday, September 18th and will continue to keep council informed. I attended the VPP function, Bodefall is what it's called, event in Oil Springs on Thursday, September 19th. That was later entertained by Mr. Mark Payne, music director, Mrs. Calandra Dentis, VPP Development, and Jesse Grandmont. That was a great event and a good time had by everyone. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, Mr. David Hogan, Artistic Director, and Mr. David Rogers, Artistic Director, were also in attendance and it was a great event. And I just wanna just add a little bit to what the deputy mayor spoke about, the show on with the theater right now with Fiddler on the Loose and the council on those present. If you haven't seen it, the show was outstanding and you've got still another week left, so if you can attend, it's certainly worth being there. I have something that's not good news, but I would just, I want to mention this for those that may not be aware, I'd like to read the following. We had vandalism in Petrolia on September 22nd, Sunday morning. It is with great disappointment that I advise the public of some overnight vandalism. Two town crosswalks that are a public symbol of acceptance, inclusion, and community were vandalized overnight in Petrolia. Not only is this unacceptable, but it is also unwelcome in our community as we strive to welcome all people to find a place of belonging. As mayor, this will not be tolerated. Hate has no room in Petrolia. As we focus on acceptance of all, I will not allow this discriminatory visual to deter the town from welcoming diversity and fostering equality. The Ontario Provincial Police have been notified and the town of Petrolia asks that anyone with information to please contact them at the non-emergency number 1-888-310-1122. And if you feel uncomfortable to call the police, call me and I will not release your name and I will call the police. I would like to thank the staff, volunteers, and all those involved with the cleanup in such a quick manner on a Sunday. And to finish off, I would just like to ask Councillor Welsh to please stand up with her T-shirt to show everyone. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. We have an update from the appointed council representatives to review the draft committee minutes and an update from the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee. And we have Councillor Welsh and Deputy Mayor Field. Which one of you two would like to take the lead on this? Okay, Councillor Welsh, go ahead, please.
So just basically everything that you can read in the minutes that are attached to the agenda, um, the committee talked a little bit about, um, we will be hosting the Lampton Historical Society for their annual meeting. It's on a rotating basis through municipalities and this year it's Petrolia, so we're having their dinner meeting here with speakers. Will actually be the students from Petrolia Discovery this summer. And, um, we also discussed about the oil seeps that are fenced off in the Bridgeview Park North and thought that it's a really good opportunity to teach people about why those are there and that was some of the first properties developed for a while in the town of Petrolia when they founded here. Um, and that's kind of all the excitement from the heritage agenda.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to move that? Do we approve those minutes? Moved by Councillor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held on June 18th, 2024.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have members, Councillor Clark and Councillor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead? Councillor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
So thank you. To go along with the minutes there, just a couple highlights, talked about budget items for 2025, what we'd like to be included in parks and rec areas. And then secondly, I want to send out a special thanks to Jean Windowver. She will be stepping down from the Petrolia and Blooms Committee, but I think she's very long-serving, so we want to send her a special thanks to that.
Thank you, Councillor Hyatt. And you're right, she has been a gem for this town regarding the plants and helping us for years and years. Would you like to move that we approve those minutes?
Please.
Moved by Councillor Hyatt, I'll need a second or seconded by Councillor Clark. Any, oh, sorry, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held on September 8th, 2024.
Any questions from council? All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee. We have Councillor Patel and Councillor Hyatt and we have two sets of minutes. Which one would like to take the lead? Councillor Patel, go ahead, please.
Thank you, through your worship. As the minutes outline in the attached, we did not reach quorum in May, so a lot of our decisions or options were postponed onto our June meeting, uh, which is our main point of what's happening with our youth advisory is that we have had some great committee members that are off to secondary school and that leaves us in a position that there's openings and we are doing whatever we can to encourage the public and the service groups to have representation with youth members and/or public that would love to be a part of the energy that's in this room and help us move those projects forward. There's a lot of great things happening and we do have two new members, but we are certainly in need of more to help with all the events and our yes event next spring, that we moved it for attendance. So if you know people out there that would be interested, we'd love to see them come out, they love their applications.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Patel. I think we can take both of those minutes at the same time. Would you like to make that a motion to approve those minutes?
I would, please.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a second or. Councillor Hyatt, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee meetings held on May 14th and June 4th, 2024.
Any questions from council? If not, all those in favor approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now to the Petrolia North Enniskillan Fire Committee. We have, uh, Councillor Chad Harriet is the chairperson and we have Councillor O'Hara. And we have two sets of minutes from April 25th and September 17th. And I just want to mention, I'm really pleased to see those minutes come in so quickly. Which one of you individuals would like to take the lead on that?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so Hyatt, go ahead.
So I guess the first set of minutes are just talking about the tanker. Tanker's been ordered, so that is a good news story to get that piece of equipment updated for the fire department. Second set of meetings is a very recent meeting, just talking about, it's the draft meeting, the draft meeting minutes, talking about 2024 actual budget, 2025 OpEx, 2025 CapEx planning. We've also developed kind of a strategic planning outlook for the future of the fire department, so I think we've got lots of great things happening.
It certainly does when you read the minutes. Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to approve both of those minutes?
Yes, please.
Moved by Councillor Hyatt. I need a second or by Councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That the council of the town of Petrolia endorses presented minutes of the Petrolia North Enniskillan Fire Committee held in April and draft minutes of September, 2024.
Any questions, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the Emergency Management Committee. We have Deputy Mayor Field and Councillor Hyatt. Again, which one of you would like to take the lead on that?
He's on a roll.
It's okay. Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, this meeting unfortunately was delayed due to too many calls at the fire hall, so we have delayed the meeting to another date, to be determined.
I think there was three, wasn't there? There was, that was unfortunate. You can't meet with the fire department or an emergency meeting when all your emergency people have to go to an emergency. All right, would you like to approve at least those minutes before you? Moved by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Councillor Deputy Mayor Field. Any questions regarding that? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the Municipal Services and Traffic Committee and I've got circled here, Councillor Hyatt's gonna take the lead on that, so Councillor Hyatt, go ahead again.
Uh, thank you. So just a couple updates, Tank Street, top coat, second coat down on Tank Street, looks great. For anyone that hasn't driven down it, go ahead, take a drive, smoothest road in town. It's very wonderful. So that is done. The intake replacement project is going, is ongoing. Everything appears to be on schedule based on the update that was, was provided to me. So that is, is also nice. The sidewalk at Elizabeth School seems to be highly used, so I think that was a great project that got done this year. There seems to be lots of kids that maybe didn't walk to school now that are, that are walking to school, so that is, that is very nice. Compost wood chipping still ongoing, kinda as per regular. I think there was some updates maybe sent out about the next round of wood chipping coming in three weeks or so, but some of those updates were shared to delay a couple of the dates, but, so please have a look out for that. And then also some news that we're expecting an open house with waste management here in the very near future, discussing the wheelie bins or rolly carts, whatever you'd like to refer them as, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hyatt. That's all good news. There's lots of good things happening and it's nice to see those projects come to, to an end. Would you like to move that motion before you?
Please.
Moved by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Councillor Hyatt's update on municipal services happenings.
And before they call the, my call to vote, I just wanted to mention, when you looked at the budget for the activity, the planning activity, I just want to let you know, like, at the present time, we're at 9.4 million. Last year, we were at 7.6 million and in 2022, we were at 10.2, so we're just under that. So considering the, you know, the time when the housing market and everything's slowing down, we're still doing very well. All right, a call to vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now to planning and development. We have Deputy Mayor Field and Councillor Welsh. Which one of the two of you would like to take the lead? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead, please.
Planning staff and that committee have been working with the southeast Cordon Sector developers and encouraging them to move forward with their submissions for draft plan of subdivision applications. Once servicing issues are resolved, all the support, supporting studies are completed. Planning staff are currently in review of three draft plan of subdivisions within the town and are working with developers on seven separate site plan applications throughout the town. Numerous pre-constatation, pre-consultation, I haven't heard of time, meeting, meetings have occurred with developers throughout the town regarding their applications and their outstanding submissions. Planning and that is also working on setting up a new shared document with St. Clair Region Authority for the status of applications to help streamline the process to, to assist the developers, so it's a very busy committee and it's some exciting stuff that's coming forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. That's, and I'm really pleased to see some of these finally come to a draft plan after all these years. It's taken a while. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the deputy mayor's verbal update on planning and development happenings.
I get a move in a second.
You did not.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I need a move in a second or. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Councillor Welsh. Thank you. Any questions regarding the development, which is good news? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Before I move on, just for those present, the reason I have the motions read by the clerk is so that everyone is clear on what they're voting on and the public you sitting there know what we're voting on. That'll take us to correspondence. We have two items, an A and B. I'll ask for a motion to put them on the floor for discussion. Moved by Councillor Patel, seconded by Councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file items 11A and B.
Any questions regarding those items of correspondence? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us on to correspondence for consideration and a motion. And we have a letter of request from MAS regarding picnic tables. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that on the floor for discussion. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Field. Okay, seconded by Councillor Clark. Can I have the clerk kind of read that motion, please, so we're clear on that?
I did receive a motion from Deputy Mayor Field in relation to this and that motion is that the council of the town of Petrolia approve the request for picnic tables to be loaned to the Moore Agricultural Society to assist with the annual Brigdon Fall Fair.
Councillor Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Um, thank you, your worship. I know we have a fee schedule and this falls into the fee schedule, but I believe this organization, uh, through the fairs have also donated to us. When we need grandstands, they're the first to step forward, so I believe that this is doing the right thing and donating that back, so, you know, I hope that we can endorse this to lend some picnic tables to our neighbors to help them out, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Any other questions from council? Want to read that?
I certainly can. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to approve the request for picnic tables to be loaned to the Moore Agricultural Society to assist with the annual Brigdon Fall Fair.
And again, as Deputy Mayor Field stated, I mean, we, we share back and forth, so that's nice. Okay, any other questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to delegations and presentations. And the first one is a presentation of gift to council from the Petrolia 150 Hard Oil Music Festival Chairpersons and I'll ask them all to come forward, please.
Yes, I'll come here. Guess so. Just taking the picture.
Very, yeah. That's just got on.
Sorry, Lucy, one.
Yeah. I'm ready to go down there. And I just let me go out my eyes like this and like.
Thank you. She's gonna sing you a song. On behalf of the Petrolia Hard Oil Music Festival and the Petrolia 150th Committee, we would like to present the town of Petrolia, uh, Town Council, a souvenir of this guitar that has been signed by, but all the band members that were, that played during our music festival. So we are hoping that you will find a prominent location in the municipal building to hang this piece of precious.
Commemorative memory.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go, I on behalf of the council and the staff want to thank you. I'm not sure who plays the guitar around here. I know I don't, but I think this is great, especially when it's signed, so thank you very much. Is there anything else you would like to add at this time?
As a committee member, I want to thank the town and specifically these two staff members here for all of their hard work and support and really pulling this off for the town and it was such a success. Thank you.
Huge success.
Well, thank you, but I'd just, I'd like to ask Councillor O'Hara, who is the council rep that sits on the, sits on the 150 Committee. Councillor O'Hara, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been sitting on the committee, I think, for about four years now and as we're winding down now, but for the, our big music weekend and not only that, but all the events that have gone all year, Larissa and Tara have been just unbelievable. The amount of hours they put in, we really appreciate what they do and all the staff from the town, the volunteers to make this work was unbelievable to actually have that many people out volunteering. So I'd like to appreciate everybody. I'm not going to mention any more names because it could go on and on and on, but thank you very much.
And before we move on, I want to thank Councillor O'Hara for arranging all the mayor, mayors to show up and come in the parade from 1978, so that was fun. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on. We've also got a presentation to the Royal Canadian Legion Brands 216 of the 2023 Memorial Banner Program proceeds and I'm going to ask the Parks and Rec members, Clark and Hyatt, to go down and if you'd go down to the front, please. And Mr. Charlebois, would you like to join them?
Sure. You can have the mic. That's okay, it's still good. I just need something to drink.
Those of you that may know, I used to be in the military. Sarnia did this about six years ago and Petrolia did it here, so it was a banner for people that were in the military, they could get a banner and some of the proceeds from those banners that were hung up on the pole, our light poles downtown, bows towards the Legion. Sure what you're gonna use it for, but.
We have several things we can use it.
Never enough money.
No.
President White, if you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Yes, I would like to thank the town for doing the banner program. Whatever assistance that we can give you, we will do again. It was an honor to see the names of the people who've sacrificed a lot for this town to be there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Charlebois, what, we haven't seen, how much was the check for? Great, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna ask for Clark and Hyatt, councillors, to stay there, please. Next, we have a presentation from the Lampton Central Petrolia. Next, we have a presentation from the Lantin Central Petrolia Optimist Club. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Optimist Club present their check to council for the Kerr Playground Project. And we'd love to have, we'd love to have you say a few words.
There you go. I guess I nominated. So on behalf of the Lantin Center Petroy Optimists, we've already donated the funds, but this is our official thank you as well for all your support in updating the small playground set at Kerr Park with the new soft surface and drainage. So hopefully that the children can use it more all year round.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you for that. And for clarification for council that can't see it, how much was that for? Thank you. Well, that's great. We certainly appreciate those kind of presentations and that was fun. So thank you all for coming. That'll take us now to, we have a delegation from Dan, Mr. Daniel Siegel, builder, owner of Siegel Construction. And council received a copy of this report and a copy of the resolution.
Excellent. So as soon as he'll be joining us digitally, so he should be on our screens and available to communicate with us here. We'll just give a test to make sure that his volume and his microphone are working. So if you can, Mr. Siegel, just a quick test to say hello and we'll make sure you're all good.
Hi there. Can you hear me all right?
Ken, thank you for that.
Mr. Siegel, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me this late afternoon. I had to pick my son and his friend up from track, so my buddy is driving my car and I'm presenting from the passenger seat, so I'm not driving this afternoon this evening. So thanks for hearing me. I'm Daniel Siegel. I'm a builder from Siegel Construction. I've been doing laneway houses and gardens suites in Toronto and Hamilton since 2020. And about a month ago, I decided I wanted to start working with municipalities to do municipal housing construction because my goal is to build 1,000 units in 2025. And as a result, I've contacted every single municipality in Ontario to advocate for municipal housing construction through municipal bond offerings or other market-based financial products. So the goal here is either attainable housing, which I define as the house you move in after you move into your parents' house. Generally, that would be a smaller unit. It could also be used for seniors housing and finally for workers coming to the city looking to live and work while still being able to afford their car payments and their groceries. So we all know there's a housing problem in Ontario. And I'm here opening the door to a solution. You could see in my resolution, there's a there's an attachment, there's a cover letter, as well as a one-page draft resolution that opens the door to municipal housing construction. And the goal of this presentation this afternoon is to forward this resolution on to staff to do a staff report. That pretty much opens the door to, hey, Dan, what are you talking about? And I could sit down with the mayor and CAO and the CFO ideally, and maybe work with the community futures organization to put together housing. The idea here is that traditional housing is built and then it's operated for 75 years until it has to be torn down. The idea that I'm proposing is that we build 15 to 20 small attainable units and we sell them at market value after they're completed. And then we decide to do more or less depending on what the scale that is right for your community. So as a Tarian builder vendor, I offer the opportunity to sell the house after it's complete. And that's great because nobody, rather municipalities, may not think their role is in housing. They generally would refer that to the upper tier, but here I'm talking about attainable housing and not affordable housing. And affordable housing is usually dealt with by the upper tier. Attainable housing may not necessarily tier. In any case, the idea here is to get in and out of the housing project in about two to three years. That's from development to the time that people are occupying it. I'm basically talking about a prefabricated 600 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath unit that are arranged in a horseshoe configuration. I could go into more detail about this. And they're built and put into place in different phases. And each phase, they're built and occupied, sold off, and then the second phase goes. So we're looking at low-risk mitigated building to fill the need for attainable housing. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for addressing council. I'm glad you clarified that social housing, because the county of Lampton is very involved involved upper tier with the housing. I would probably like to recommend that council consider deferring this to the county. But at this time, I will open it up to council to see if they have any questions. As council, Deputy Mayor Field.
Yeah, through you, your worship. I agree with you. And I know you just mentioned this, that referring it to the upper tier, but the upper tier is currently going through the process. I understand your difference with attainable, but the county has looked at different types of housing and went through RFP processes. So I believe that this still is an upper-tier county of Lampton.
I think, would you like to make that a motion that we defer this to the county? Moved by Deputy Mayor Field. I need a seconder for that, please. Seconded by councillor Clark. Any further discussion?
I guess I just want to clarify what we're deferring. Are we sending him to the county? I don't want it to be misconstrued that we're endorsing this and sending this to the county to support. I believe that it's a county function, so maybe I.
I'll ask the clerk to speak to that. I think the intent was maybe to send this on to the county for their consideration. I'll ask the clerk to correct me or to correct that.
Certainly, your worship. And we can take it either direction. As the mover and seconder wish, we can defer them to the clerk of the county of Lampton for further discussion. And also possibly to the director of, I think, actually manager of housing, I believe, as well. So we can make that request that both those people receive the information from Mr. Siegel.
I would like that. Would we request a report back? No. Okay. All right.
I just wanted to endorse that. Yes.
I'm okay with that. Is that clear with council? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we will do that, but I certainly want to thank you for addressing council.
Thank you for hearing me this evening and all the best to you.
Okay, thank you. Same to you.
Bye now.
All right. That'll move us on to the community announcements, recognitions and awards. And you have a list before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor. Moved by councillor O'Hara, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the September 23rd, 2024, community announcements as presented.
Boy, it's October, ever a busy month. Councillor Wells, go ahead.
Something.
Certainly, go ahead.
Doors Open will take place on the 28th, which is next Saturday. And we have a number of venues in Petrolia, including Nemo Hall, the Corey Room, Petrolia Discovery, and the McCourt Home on Garfield Street that are open for Doors Open Saturday, 10 to 4.
Thank you for that, councillor Wells. And that's actually put on through the county, but that should be a good event if you're able to attend. Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
That was my addition as well, your worship. Thank you. I'm glad councillor Welsh was able to announce.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the, I'll ask council, any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the first opportunity for the public to address council. Do we have anyone written a request, Mrs. Mrs. Pearson?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the public here present. Is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the financial accounts report. I'll have a mover and a seconder to put that first motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor O'Hara, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the June 19th, 2024, through to August 30th, 2024, general financial accounts.
And our councillor O'Hara is in charge of the accounts and finance. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the accounts? Opposed, that motion carries. And we also have another one regarding the pecuniary interest from Deputy Mayor Field.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Just completing the pecuniary interest. You're going a little faster for it. Okay, that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the June 19th, 2024, through to August 30th, 2024, Lampton sanitation accounts.
Okay, and as the clerk noted, there was a conflict of interest and he's moved back from the table. Any questions regarding those those accounts? If not, I'll ask once again to our finance chairperson, councillor Howard, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor of approving those accounts? Opposed, that motion carries. And please note Deputy Mayor Field will resume as chair. Number 17, we have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebaugh, CEO of Treasurer, regarding a site plan amendment request for an exemption to the Petrolia Legion. And I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 23rd of September, 2024, regarding a site plan for the Petrolia Legion, and that the council of the town of Petrolia waived the site plan application fees for the Petrolia Legion on a one-time basis.
Any questions from council? Mr. Charlebaugh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to thank our town planner for being able to work with the Legion and find a suitable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Hyatt?
Just one question. Thank you through you. In the report, it says they're going to use temporary fencing for building an outdoor bar. Is it ever going to potential to turn into a permanent structure? And if we're planning, should we be planning for a permanent?
I'll ask maybe Mr. Benjamins, can you speak to that? Was that planned to be the same? Or are they going to put something permanent up later on?
I'm through your worship to councillor Hyatt. I am not sure at this time, but that will be addressed through the site plan approval process.
Mr. Carr, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
The patio that we're planning to put up will be temporary fencing that'll be able to be taken down in the event that we're doing car shows or anything like that. There is no plan to put a permanent in-the-ground structure there.
Wonderful. Thank you. And as council is aware of, the fee was $1,695 is what we're waiving. I guess I'll get you to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 23rd of September, 2024, regarding a site plan for the Petrolia Legion. And that the council of the town of Petrolia waived the site plan application fees for the Petrolia Legion on a one-time basis.
All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. All right, we have a report from Mr. Trevor Benjamins, our senior planner, regarding the housekeeping bylaw amendment, additional dwelling units, the ADUs. And again, there is a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. I need a move. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to approve the zoning bylaw amendment as presented to amend regulations for additional dwelling units in the town of Petrolia zoning by law, by law 63 of 2017, and that a bylaw be brought forward at future council meeting date.
This is all related to the public meeting we had tonight. Any questions from council? Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank you through you to Bishop Benjamins. What was the background information that was used for determining like the 1.5 meter setback from the property line in terms of adding like an accessory building?
Mr. Benjamins, go ahead, please.
Through your worship to councillor Hyatt, there are other municipalities within the county of Lampton who have already undergone these housekeeping amendments to their bylaws, specifically the township of Warwick, Plimpton, Wyoming, and Point Edward have already done these amendments, slight variation changes, obviously. So those were used as background material, but also looking at other larger municipalities. So it was kind of a combination of how we came up with the 1.5 and 3-meter setbacks.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamins. You okay with that?
Yeah, so there's nothing, there's nothing from the province that says 1.5 meters is the number. It could be two, it could be 2.5.
Mr. Benjamins, go ahead.
That is correct. It is open to interpretation and I after reviewing all of those previous amendments, that's the number that I felt best to propose to this council.
Thank you. Any other question? Councillor Wells?
I'm wondering if this council would consider prior to us seeing this bylaw on our next agenda, 1.8 meter setback that is being done by other municipalities, Clarrington and Essex specifically, and others that I can't remember right now when I was looking things up. But that would just give it a little bit more of a buffer zone when there's concerns from Mr. Bray about privacy and noise. I would imagine also can be an issue. Anyway, if that could be something that can be considered when we see the final bylaw.
We do have a motion on the floor to deal with right now.
So to accomplish that, this bylaw does, or this motion does need to be considered. It is a primary. So you are voting on the motion as is, if depending on the action, if it, if council so desires and the motion doesn't proceed, then you can bring forward a new motion with that amendment listed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion from council? Councillor Hyatt?
One more question through you to Mr. Benjamin. So it talks in the zoning bylaw amendment that we'd be using the existing heights for auxiliary buildings, which I think is 4.5 meters. So that number would stay. Does that mean it's possible to put a two-story ADU in your backyard?
Mr. Benjamins, go ahead.
Through your worship to councillor Height, yes, they can still apply for variances for ADUs if they exceed that height within our bylaw. But again, generally, we'd like to see a majority of ADUs be within those height restrictions, which are permitted within our bylaw.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Field?
Just through you, your worship, just for clarification through to the clerk. Why is it that we can't amend? It has to be as a whole? Why couldn't it be an amendment to this one?
Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
You certainly could. This is, oh, my, my motion just went away. Sorry. Technology. That's okay. You could certainly, so the motion is that the council of the town of Petrolia approved the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to amend regulations for additional dwelling units in the town of Petrolia zoning by law 63 of 2017. And then, of course, that the bylaw be brought forward at a future council meeting. So it's to propose, you're dealing with the proposal as a whole. So if you'd like to put this as a deferred motion, you could certainly bring forward an emotion to amend, yes.
But we couldn't amend this motion?
You, that then we aren't dealing with our primary, then we'll deal with your your motion to amend. It'll trump the current.
So we'll deal with the motion on the floor first. Then if you want to bring another motion after they can.
If it is to amend, then absolutely you can bring that. That will then speak to the motion before this. This is, that will then become our primary motion.
We'll vote on this one first.
No, you can.
You can ask for an amendment.
Right, so that motion can be requested. Thank you, councillor.
More questions.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion from council? Councillor Wells?
This is going to clean up a number of our zoning, of zoning issues also. Are they entire, are they permitted to use the entire front yard for parking?
Go ahead, Benjamins.
Through your worship to councillor Welsh, I might need further clarification on that question. Um, through your worship to Counselor Welsh, I might need further clarification on that question. A D U's are required to have one parking space. Some lots within town may already have enough room to allow one more parking space if they so desire. But parking spaces are six point one meters by, I think it's two point seven meters wide. So they'll have to provide enough room for, for, so if they have three units, they'll have to provide three parking spaces, for example. Parking spaces can be in the front yard. However, they'll have to, they'll still have to look at other considerations such as lot coverage and things like that. So, so they may be able to, but that's kind of, yeah, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
Get there. The last question I think I had was, there is no restriction.
Counselor Wells, prefer your question through me, please.
Um, is there a limit to the number of occupants in these A D U's?
Uh, through your worship, Counsel Welsh, no, I do not believe that there is any proposed limitations on the number of occupants within each of these dwellings. Again, that can be hard to regulate, you know, the size of a family per se. So no, there's nothing in the draft bylaw that would restrict the, the number of occupants within each of these units in the current state.
Is that it? We move on? Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion?
Is there going to be an amendment motion?
Nothing's come forward. I'll need a mover and a seconder to get an amendment. But if there's an amendment, I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. And I just want clarification on that amendment. We'll vote on the amendment first. Can you read that amendment, please? Or what's the proposed amendment? What was it?
Counselor Field, Counselor Hyatt, we'd like to provide you the.
Yes, sure, that we go from one point five to one point eight meters.
And that's site setback or?
Your worship, if I may, so this would be amending the setback for additional dwelling units. The way the draft bylaw is written right now is it shall be at least one point five meters from the interior side yard and rear lot lines. So you, so you would be directing me to prepare, to amend the bylaw from one point five to one point eight meters from the interior and rear lot lines.
Right, both. Okay. All right, so we'll talk, we'll vote on the amendments. Everybody clear on that? We need to read that, Mrs. Pearson?
That the motion be amended to have the bylaw be replaced with the requirement for one point five meters for setback and additional side unit to one point eight meters.
Okay, we're voting on, okay, Counsel O'Hara.
I don't know why we don't stay with the one point five. Like, I can't see how much difference it's going to make. And the rest of the municipalities in Lampton County are going with one point five, it sounds like. So I don't know why we don't stay consistent with, with the one point five. People, you know. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel O'Hara. Any other questions from council? All right, we're just going to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to break that vote.
Okay.
And I'm opposed, so it's not carrying.
There's only three people left, including yourself, your worship.
Four to three? Okay, so it carries. Sorry, my mistake. So four to three, the motion carries. So now we'll vote on the motion before you.
So the motion is now as amended. That the council of the town of Petrolia approve as amended the zoning bylaw amendment to amend regulations for additional dwelling units in the town of Petrolia zoning by law sixty-three of two thousand seventeen, and that a bylaw be brought forward at a future council meeting.
Okay, any discussion? I'm going to request a recorded vote, please.
Certainly. Perfect, and.
Okay, Counsel Patel?
Just to clarify, are we now voting on the amended?
We're voting on the motion as amended. The main motion as amended.
Okay, thank you.
So to remind everybody, we go in alphabetical order except for the mover and seconder of the request. In this case, it is the mayor who has requested it, so he will be the last vote. There will not be a second to last vote. Okay.
Just, just for clarification, the only difference is in the amendment, it goes from one point five to one point eight.
Correct, so you're voting on the amendment. If the vote fails, it'll go to the original one point five.
Okay.
And again, it's for or against. Counselor Clark?
For.
Counselor Hyatt?
For.
Counselor O'Hara?
Against.
Counselor Patel?
Against.
Counselor Welsh?
For.
Deputy Mayor Field?
For.
Mayor Loosely?
Against.
That is four to three. That carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. We have a report from Jessica Smith, manager of Legislative Services Deputy Clerk regarding our business license and sign permits. And I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the manager of Legislative Services Deputy Clerk and Human Resource Managers Report dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four regarding business license and signage permits issued.
Any questions from council? Ms. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, that'll take us down to finance. We have a report from Annette Strand, manager of Finance Deputy Treasurer regarding the two thousand twenty-three financial information return. And you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Wells. Any discussion from council? Counselor Wells, go ahead.
I did actually send a few questions to Annette and asking her about what some of the lines included. And maybe it's most appropriate just to have her explain that.
Mrs. Strand, if you'd like to come forward, do you have the questions there?
Yes, I do, your worship.
If you'd like to go through them with us, please.
Want me to read the questions as well?
Is there a lot of them?
No.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so Counselor Welsh was asking about Schedule ten, line ten ninety-nine. What is included on this as revenue from other municipalities? So this is our schedule that refers to revenue. And in that column, we have revenue that we take in from other municipalities, including water sales, fire department cost sharing, county grant for policing, cemetery grants, and arena grants.
Hey, are you okay with that, Counsel Welsh? Okay, all right, next?
Okay, the next one, Schedule ten, line sixteen twenty. This number seems to fluctuate over the last few years. I recall Rick working on something to remedy tax arrears. Does this still happen? And this is referring to the outstanding arrears specific to interest and penalty for taxes as at December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And yes, it does fluctuate based on who has paid their account and who hasn't. So it does fluctuate. We do send out quarterly statements. And if those, those accounts are left unpaid after a certain period, we send letters out. And once a tax account remains unpaid after a certain amount of time, a final warning goes out by registered mail prior to tax registration.
Counselor Wells, you okay with that? All right, thanks, please.
Uh, the next is referring to Schedule fifty-three, line ten twenty, which is a schedule that speaks to our tangible capital assets. And what is included in this number was the question? This includes capital expenditures for town general, water and sewer additions and betterments.
Counselor Wells, can we move on?
Yep.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I believe the final question we clarified for Schedule seventy, line sixty-six oh four.
Okay, all right, while you're here, does council have any questions, Mrs. Strand? If not, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Before you go, then is there anything else you'd like to add regarding the F I Rs?
Nothing at this time.
I know they're a lot of work. I remember well. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll just ask our treasurer, Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add regarding the F I Rs?
Just to confirm that it's a lot of work, it's the bit, it's the largest, most complicated report that a municipality has to do. It's mandatory report. And thanks very much to Annette for getting ours in.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. All right, did we get a mover and seconder on that motion? Okay, I'll have the clerk, all right, thank you. I'll have the clerk read that motion, please.
And that is the council of the town of Petrolia receive and file the report of the deputy treasurer dated the twenty-third of September, two thousand twenty-four regarding our two thousand twenty-three financial information return known as the F I R.
Last time, any questions? Any further questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And moving on, we have a report from our fire chief, Rick Cousins, Director of Public Safety. And there's a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussions regarding that motion? I'll ask the clerk to read that, so we're all clear.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the fire chief, Director of Public Safety dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four regarding the hiring of new recruits.
Any discussion from council? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the closed session under Section two thirty-nine, two of the Act. We have two items. Item one is legal, and it's regarding part lot thirty-one and thirty-three, Plan fourteen, Eureka Street Petrolia. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. An advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including indications necessary for the purpose. And item two is personnel, a resident request for exemption to the animal control bylaw due to medical reasons and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. So I will ask for a mover and a seconder to break from open session to go into closed session. Moved by Deputy Field, Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. And I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to break from open session and move to closed session.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor? That motion carries. We'll move in the camera. All those will be asked to leave and we will open the door once we're finished to finish off our final meeting of council. I think it's just.